I'm looking for councillor Mackie to do something about those wild turkeys.
We will next week.
So councillor Chris. Katrina has started the live stream and we will begin in a couple of minutes.
Thank you. I'll wait for it to say nine thirty. Okay, good morning, everyone. It's April twenty second, two thousand and twenty one, and this is a meeting of County Council. I'm calling this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, may we please have the roll call?
Good morning, council. Thank you, Mr. Warden. We have all members in attendance right now with the exception of councillor Soever. And I will alert you when he arrives.
Thank you very much. Next, we will do the land acknowledgement. And so we wish to acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality and culture of the Anish, Anishinaabe, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Howden O'Shane and the Wendat, Wyandot, Wyandot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors, ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We also recognize the Meti and Inuit, whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we, may we all as treaty people live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. Okay, council, is there anyone with a declaration of interest, pecuniary or otherwise? Seeing none, I would just ask that if one does arise during the course of the meeting that you declare it at that time. Item number five, adoption of minutes. First is.
Sorry, Mr. Warden, I will just acknowledge that councillor Soever has joined us. Thank you.
Thank you very much and welcome councillors Soever. Item five A is the County Council and Committee of the Whole Minutes, which are dated April eighth, two thousand and twenty one. That is moved by councillor Robinson and seconded by councillor Keveney. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question, is there anyone opposed to approval? And seeing none, that will be carried. Item five B is the Committee of the Whole, closed meeting minutes, which are dated April eighth, two thousand and twenty one as well. Those are being moved by councillor Patterson and seconded by councillor Clumpus. And is there any need for discussion on those minutes? And again, seeing none, I will call the question, is there anyone opposed? That too will be declared carried. I believe we have no closed meeting matters and we're on to item number seven, good news and celebration. Is there anyone who has something to say? I see councillors Soever, you will be first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd just like to congratulate the health unit on the, the way they're continuing to run the clinics. I had the opportunity yesterday to attend the, the vaccination clinic in Hanover and it was very well run. There were a lot of people there and they moved them through very efficiently. And there was also like to thank all the volunteers that were out there helping with that, just a great operation. I only observed one risk and that was the proliferation of fast food places in Hanover, which posed a serious risk in my heart health diet and so which until yesterday was going very well.
Nicely said. Thank you for that councillor Soever. Next is councillor Robinson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council and staff. I just wish to acknowledge C A O Kim Wingrove. I had the occasion to virtually attend an online event entitled Climate Action in Politics. C A O Wingrove presented and the presentation was outstanding and extremely well done. So I wanted to share that with County Council and all that listen in on our council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Robinson. Next is councillor Woodbury.
Thank you. What I'd like to share is, is good news for one and maybe not as good news for the rest of us. I just thought this is probably one of the last meetings that we'll get to see Kevin Weppler before his retirement. And I just would like, I've only known him a couple of years, but would like to thank him for all his professionalism, professionalism and dedicated work. I know talking to, to Brian Mullen and to our staff, the relationship that you've fostered with, with the different municipalities and people is second to none. And just wanted to wish you a happy retirement and enjoy yourself and take time to settle in. I know the first little while when I retired, I thought I was on vacation for the first few weeks and had to get into a different mindset. So just enjoy.
Thank you very much councillor Woodbury. I'm sure everyone else shares your sentiment. I agree, yes.
Full wings go.
Next is councillor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Two, two things. The first is with regards to the Great Highlands Public Library. We were successful in, in getting a Ontario Trail infant resiliency funding in the amount of eighty three thousand, five hundred dollars. When I brought this up at our municipal council meeting yesterday, we had a bit of a conversation of what we think the library staff has raised in grants since the, since it became Great Highlands Public Library. And we think that number is probably close to around two million dollars. And so I just want to bring this up here and, and just say that I'm very proud of our library system in Great Highlands and the work that, that staff does at the library. The other is, of course, the fundraiser for the hospice. I don't know if any of you have been following along on Facebook and Instagram. But we, we did this last year. We did, we did nineteen days of fundraising. This year we decided to do only ten because some of us ran out of idea, not me, but some of the others ran out of video ideas because I'm, I'm amazing, as you all know. So far, last, yesterday was our sixth day of fundraising and so far we've raised three thousand, four hundred and twenty five dollars. We, we'll, we will be fundraising until midnight on Sunday. And we've got an interesting cast of characters. We've got Batman, Mario. We've got a T-Rex named Dino Darrell. We've got a Ninja Turtle, Snow White and Waldo. I, I must say Waldo has been very easy to find so far, right in the center of the video. Anyways, I, I do hope you guys catch some of the videos that we're, we're posting out. We're using the hashtag Highlander Tribute two thousand and twenty one. And with regards to Mr. Weppler's retirement, Kevin, I hope you find your wings and fly. That was supposed to be a Red Wings pun. I, I think it fell a bit flat, but anyways, it's been, it's been an honor and a pleasure, Kevin. Talking, talking budgets and, and municipal finances with you. So thank you very much for your years of, years of dedicated service to Great County. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you councillor Desai and wah, wah, wah to you. So next will be councillor Keveney, and I have to say in this Zoom environment, it is nice to not have an excuse to confuse Keveney and Carlton anymore. Councillor Keveney, you're next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Good morning, everyone. And I just wanted to share some news. It's not good news, but there certainly is an element of celebration, celebration of life with regards to the loss on April twelfth of Grace Lamb, Grandma Lamb, who's well known throughout the entire county. And it's just a huge loss for our community in Needford and certainly Chatsworth and, and everyone who has ever had the pleasure of dropping into Grandma Lamb's or, or meeting Grace. She was a true matriarch and an incredibly generous person who took love of community to heart and she is going to be sorely missed. And I just wanted to acknowledge her passing here. So, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much councillor Keveney. I don't see any other hands. I'm just wondering if anyone from Southgate would like to highlight your monthly concert, which has been just amazing.
Yeah, I could, I could do that. That, we have a group, I think I've mentioned before called Junction Group that started up with some of the people that have recently moved into the area in the last few years. And their, their goal is, is volunteer group to support the community and everybody to get to know each other. Those have been here for generations and those that are new. And they do this concert the third Friday of, of every month. And this year they did an Easter theme, so there was speakers as well as singers. And it was, it's a lot of fun. It's a very relaxed thing. We get, they get anywhere from about sixty to a hundred people online and we're trying to get more. And it's, they're actually getting people from all over the world. So it's that, that have ties to, to the area as, as well as, I'm sorry. Buck, you may remember his name. I don't. There's the fellow that wrote and recorded or co-wrote, recorded who let dogs out. And he's performed and phoned in and impromptu and performed. So it's, it's really uplifting for the community. It's a super positive event. And usually once people get involved, they see it, they want to come back the next time. And we may even have a performer, a local performer from Gray County next time that you may want to see. Buck's daughter may be doing a song on the next one. So it's, it's nice to see when you leave things to the, the public and just support them and kind of get out of the way. Great things can happen.
Thank you very much for that councillor Woodbury. And I would say it is a really nice international now, monthly gathering. And great to highlight the local talent and a nice way to spend a Friday evening. If people want to get information about it, I'm guessing they can go to Southgate's website for a link to the event.
Yes, yes, they can. And I can, I can actually send out some information in the next couple of weeks to.
Thanks very much. Okay, I don't see anyone else's hand. So with that, we're going to move next to adjournment of this meeting. It is moved by councillor Hutchison and seconded by councillor Mill. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that too is carried. Thank you very much. We'll take a second to switch over to Committee of the Whole. Get my materials together here. Okay. So I will call this meeting to order. We're now meeting as Committee of the Whole. Is there any declaration of pecuniary or interest in general? And again, I see no hands. And I would again say if one does arise during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Item number three is business arising from the minutes. Three A is our tax policy, which was deferred. And it is being moved by councillor Robinson and seconded by councillor Clumpus. Kevin, I believe you have the floor.
Thank you, Warden. I was just gonna kind of go back through this report just to remind everybody what was being considered. So you'd give me some patience as I kind of read through the highlights of this and then, and then we'll try to hopefully get this report discussed further. So this report provides council with background and advice to enable the county to establish tax policy that affects how the County of Gray apportions the, the county tax burden by property class as well between the, the nine local municipalities. In preparation of this report, the tax policy items set out in the report were discussed on February nineteenth and March twelfth with the local municipal treasures and staff to receive their input direction and support as well. Since then, since the last committee meeting, a call was arranged with the local CAOs and the treasures were also invited. And we went through the various tax policy items for, for their information as well. And that was on April fifteenth and Kim arranged that. So that, that was helpful as well. In regards to current value assessment, it's mentioned in the report due to the COVID nineteen pandemic that the Ontario government postponed the two thousand and twenty assessment update. So for two thousand and twenty one, the property values continue to be based on the fully phased January first, two thousand and sixteen values. On page seven of the report, a table has been provided that illustrates the two thousand and twenty net taxation growth and that occurred in the county in, in two thousand and twenty. This resulted in about one point two million dollars in additional tax revenue from, from those new improvements. And that is, was being utilized and that was identified in the two thousand and twenty one budget. Provincial education taxes since nineteen ninety eight, education tax rates have been regulated by the Minister of Finance on an annual basis. And there's been uniform education tax rates prescribed for properties in the residential, multi-res farm and managed forest property classes which, which apply then across the entire province. The, for business education, the province had previously prescribed business education tax rates in, in a unique, in a unique level for each upper tier or single tier jurisdiction. As part of the province's two thousand and twenty budget, they enacted a reduction in the business education tax rates provincewide to a uniform level of zero point eight eight percent. This translates to a rate reductions over two thousand and twenty rates of approximately thirty percent for any rate where that was at previous maximum and just over ten percent for those new construction rates. So, and that was illustrated in page two of, of the, or in table two of the report, which is on page, page eight of the agenda package. Tax ratios, County Council establishes the relative tax burden for the, the multi-res, commercial, industrial, farm and pipeline classes annually. Property tax ratios determine how a property's tax rate compares with a residential tax rate, tax ratio, which is legislated to be equal one. And the county's current ratios, that's listed on, on table three on page nine. Subclasses and subclass discounts, there are a number of different subclasses that apply to different property types depending on use, zoning, nature of improvements and, and the nature of the enterprise. And these include commercial, industrial vacant land, commercial, industrial excess land, property codes that are coded as farmland awaiting development. And then there's also a small scale on farm business class. And, and with these subclasses, in relations to the, the vacant and excess land for the commercial and industrial as of two thousand and twenty one, upper tier and single tier municipalities can set the discount rates for vacant and excess land anywhere up to thirty five percent as a discount or may choose not to apply any discount or in essence have a factor of one. So what are we speaking to here? And vacant land subclass, these apply to properties that are included in one of the industrial or commercial classes and as a result of zoning or planning details. But these, these properties, when they're vacant, they don't have any accessible improvement on. There's, there's no buildings on them. There's nothing. So they're just a vacant, vacant parcel of land in the commercial industrial class. Excess, excess land subclasses, they capture a portion of an improved property that are in excess of the land required for that improved portion. So these are properties that have a, a commercial or industrial building on them. And then there's a buffer of a, of land that is attached to that parcel and that is considered excess and, and they're, they have low value, but they're, they are coded on the assessment roll with two distinct classes and not dissimilar to a farm where you could have on a farm, a residential home, which would be, would be shown on your tax bill as an R T tax, residential tax class. And then you'd see the farm with the farm tax class. So these would be the same. You'd have a commercial full for a commercial business. And then if there was excess land there, it would be coded with an excess land subclass and, and with an assessed value on it. The county subclass discounts rates used in, in two thousand and twenty was a thirty percent discount for commercial vacant and excess land and thirty five percent a discount for industrial vacant excess land. The county's local treasurer's groups have had discussions regarding the two thousand and twenty one tax policy options and the elimination of the current thirty percent and the thirty five percent discounts. Based on discussions and, and in conjunction with the, the reduction to the business education tax rates that are occurring in two thousand and twenty one, it is being recommended to promote equity amongst taxpayers who don't, do not receive special discounts to encourage landlords to best, best utilize their properties, to encourage infill development and discourage speculative holdings of land. It is being recommended the elimination of the subclass discounts be implemented in two thousand and twenty one. While adjusting the full commercial and industrial tax ratios to maintain the, the approximate class level burdens on the municipal levy countywide. So what that is saying by eliminating those reductions, that would create more tax. But we're lowering the ratio for those broad classes than that, that tax, that additional tax, then we have a reduction to those other, those full classes of occupied or, or operating commercial and industrial businesses. So.
So on table five of in the report on, on page twelve, what we're saying with getting rid of those discounts, I want to highlight that that would change the excess and vacant tax rates on the county there. They look like jar, large increases. But what, when we go further through this report, you'll see we're talking very low assessment values here. And, and, and the dollar value and the tax implication is, is very small. Okay? So then on pay, table six, I also put an impact here about how, how these changes in subclasses and in the change in the ratios, how it is affecting the various classes across the county. And this is county tax. And you can see where by lowering the ratio for the commercial and industrial that you're seeing those savings happening on those full classes. There is a little bit of savings coming to the residential and it's just, we can't adjust the ratios to that infinite number to make this work perfectly. Okay? Table seven on pages thirteen illustrates the county shifts that are happening with these changes. So whenever we change a ratio, depending on each municipality's mix of properties and what they have in, within those geographical boundaries, it then can impact the shift in county taxation. So that table was provided there then to show you how, how some municipalities would have, have less county tax being requisitioned and some would have more based on, on those changes. Okay? But overall, it's a difference of thirty seven dollars. It's still revenue neutrals. What's, what's taking place here? On table eight, on page fourteen, this illustrates the, the average vacant land property tax. And this is an illustration of putting in this place this model of lowering or getting rid of the subclass discounts and as well the business education tax cut that's happening as well as the racial adjustment. So you can see in that table on countywide, a, a commercial on average is about a hundred and eight thousand in assessed value. And this model would impact what will be about a hundred and seventy three dollars increase to, to those on average industrial. You're looking at about a two hundred and seventy eight dollars. Then in table nine, it's, that illustrates the average excess land property. So these are that, those properties I said are attached to a, a building or, or an improved land and in the commercial industrial. Here you're going to see countywide again, we're not talking a lot of properties. There's a hundred and fifteen there in total. And with this model, the average commercial would see a two hundred and eighty seven dollar tax increase and industrial would see a two hundred and sixty nine. Then on, on table ten, what I've tried to illustrate here is the impact on progress with one or more portions. So this would, those ones that have access, they're also going to have a, a building or an operation going on there that you'll see in this table that even with the excess land not receiving the discount any further and with the racial deduction and, and with specifically with the education tax cut, these were going to, commercial and industrial would see significant tax decreases due to the, to the education tax changes. So this is a, because of that change in education, business education tax rates and the treasures would like to see getting rid of that vacant and excess discount. They, they feel those values and those properties are low already based on their vacant or the excess be, because of their, their class that this was an opportune time to, to go forward with this and, and as, as other counties have done. So that is the recommendation then right now is that we, we move forward with the elimination of those subclasses that we do a corresponding tax racial reduction to the commercial industrial class to maintain the tax balance. And that's what we would, are proposing for the two thousand and twenty one tax ratios. So maybe I'll stop there before I talk about other things in that report, Warden.
Thank you very much, Kevin. There is a question from councillor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And it's not so much a question as a, a thank you to, to Mr. Weppler. I had a concerned ratepayer in the industrial class regarding the changes or proposed changes. And I couldn't really describe what exactly was going to happen to this individual's property. So I connected the person with Mr. Weppler and subsequent to that, I heard that he had described in very good clear terms, what would happen to that property. And the property owner was very happy with, with the resulting numbers. And I just wanted to thank Kevin very much for his prompt reply and very clear reply. I just, I hope Mr. Weppler, when he does retire, that I hope he gets clear of mind what sports teams he needs to support. So thank you, Kevin.
Thank you for the feedback.
Is there anyone else with a, a question? Kevin, is there anything else that you wish to add?
Not, not on that topic there. Just, like I said, I think the, the treasures that that have spoken up at our, our meetings of, are, are, some of them are pretty passionate that, that they believe this is what local councils have been wanting to really, really to assist with those vacant lands that, to help, to help promote the, the use of those. So this would, this would help. And I think this is a great opportunity right now. So the other item in the, in the report that I would just like to, to mention again is that new optional small business subclass that the government has announced. So again, I'm recommending at this time that we, we not implement that for two thousand and twenty one. We still do not have the regulations from the province. So it's hard to understand exactly what they're proposing and what the limits would be on that. It's maybe something that could be considered by County Council, but I think you'd really have to sit down and strategize what you're trying to accomplish with that. And because there will be winners and losers, there'll be shifts between different property classes depending. And it's hard to even quantify what those could be or what the values of those be. But you know, and then in a two-tiered system, again, it, it causes shifts between and, you know, where, how those, that small, the definition of that small business is made, that could impact the taxes and different miss, different, different local municipalities as well, differently depending on how many of have those, what you, whatever council defines as the small business. But specifically since most of the locals have passed their budget for two thousand and twenty one. And we don't have a reg yet. And if you do go for it with something like this in two thousand and twenty one, it's going to be a, just a tax write-off. You're gonna, you can't, you can't find a way to put this into your tax rate yet and budget for it. So anyway, that's I'm, I'm not saying it's, I, I could see there could be some applications for this, but I, I I'm I'm not saying it's I I could see there could be some applications for this, but I I think more work needs to be done and more conversations would have to take place. And. And I think you have to wait to see what the regulation actually proposes at at the end here.
Absolutely, Kevin. I think it makes good sense to wait for those regulations. All right, I don't see any other questions or hands raised. With that said, I'll call the question. On the motion with respect to our property tax policies as presented, is there anyone opposed? And seeing none, that is carried. Thank you very much. We will turn next to our delegations. We have two. The first delegations with. With respect to the medical directors award to paramedics that are being presented to Paula Tremblay, Katie Gibbons, Sonia Caskey and Alicia Karla. Kevin, I believe you have the floor.
Good morning, Warden Hicks and County Council. It's my pleasure to introduce to you a Gray County paramedics, Paula Tremblay, Katie Gibbons, Sonia Smart and Alicia Karla. As well, I'd like to introduce you to from the southwestern based Ontario based hospital program. Dr. Matt Davis, our regional medical director and Dr. Sean Dorian, our local medical director. Late last year, paramedics Alicia Karla, Sonya Smart, Katie Gibbons and Paula Tremblay were awarded the Medical Directors Commendation Award. This award is given out yearly and recognizes. Leadership and participation in education or administration activities over and above regular clinical responsibilities. Advancing the practice of paramedicine by advocating on behalf of paramedics and multiple agency strategic planning for the future. As well demonstrating outstanding initiative and proposing valid. Constructive changes to the current structure of EMS with the end result of adopting improvements to the current system. Throughout our COVID response. Our our four paramedics started from scratch developing a program to assist vulnerable patients in the community. Our service had paused routine visits for community patients as well ceased operation over community clinics. These changes were for the health and safety of our patients to limit the number of people accessing their home. To augment the pause routine visits. Patients were contacted biweekly for a phone check in and to assess any needs as well as to educate on COVID nineteen safety and symptoms. When required, referrals were provided to the live home care or added who added supports in the home. Two one one community connections for social support. There was referrals to the rapid addiction access addiction support. To community county housing, social services and numerous other community organizations. Patients were provided with housing support, food, additional medical care. Were connected for addictions and mental health counseling, just to name some of the positive connections that were made. High volume callers were also included in this program as a group. Patients were selected through the assistance of interdev and using our nine one one data, which flowed into our community electronic home record for further assessment and referral. The work that was laid has laid the foundation for our nine one one patient navigator position. That exists within the county who will provide first response who will also follow their high volume callers. All involved in the program went above and beyond to help our most needy community and are very deserving of this award. I would like to congratulate Paula, Katie and Alicia and Sonia on this prestigious word and all the work that they did. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Hello, Doc. Doctor Van and and Doctor Davis are here as well. I can't see them, but Paula and Katie and Sonia and Alicia are here as well. I don't know if they maybe like to say something that if they had the opportunity, if that would be okay or.
Yeah, Kevin, that'd be great. Can you hear me there?
Yes, excellent. Yes.
Great. Thank you so much, Warden. So Paula, Katie, Sonia and Alicia, I just wanted to say, you know, excellent work on this well deserved award. I'm clearly during a difficult time. You guys went above and beyond to really. Drive forward the community paramedic program there and look after the patients and the communities you serve. So I want to say thank you for that and and my sincere congratulations, well deserved.
Excellent. And our other doctor, let's get the name. Did you want to say?
Hi, it's Matt here. So yes, just to go off of Dr. Doran there, he brought the this nomination forward to our medical council. And when we were reviewing all the nominations from across our southwest region, it was quite evident that. Paula, Sonia, Alicia's and Katie's work definitely met the criteria for the Medical Director's Commendation Award and were even exceeded. And so the the community paramedics and the nine one system, nine one one system are so intertwined that our medical council felt that. Their work was deserving of this award and this award does recognize paramedics for. Those who are facilitating the delivery of excellent prehospital care, providing exemplary care that goes above the call of duty. And delivery of excellent outstanding care in a challenging environment. And definitely with the pandemic situation going on right now, these paramedics definitely went above and beyond with the call of duty for this. So. Congratulations and it's an honor having you within our program.
Thank you very much, Dr. Davis. And with that said, Paula, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you would like to say anything, this is your turn.
Goodness. Well, thank you so much for. My post my position in this. It was my pleasure to really help out the community and. Help out with these wonderful ladies that I share this honor with. A lot of them did a lot of groundbreaking work and. It's a pleasure to be working for Gray County.
Thank you very much, Paula. Katie, you're next. Do you have no remarks or are you muted?
No, just wanted to say thank you for the recognition. I really appreciate it and I've really enjoyed working on the project. It's been. Pretty awesome to to help people in this time and and awesome to work with the other ladies involved. So thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Next is Sonia. And Sonia, did I get your name wrong? I don't think so. I think I got your name right. I don't know if I got it right or Kevin got it right.
Sonia.
No, I meant your last name.
Oh, yes, it's smart. I think it shows up as my maiden name still on my. Computer for some reason. Yeah, no, this was it was a neat project to work on and. We didn't realize when we were starting it that it was going to become an actual position in the county. So it's pretty cool to see that. The work we did made a difference enough that they want to keep it continuing forward for for people that are still currently at work because we obviously had to go off. For baby reasons. But yeah, it's it's really great to know that we're making a difference even without being able to get into people's homes and. And actually get our hands on them. So. Thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you, Sonia. And thank you for doing your share to grow our our population. Next is Alicia.
I just want to say thank you. It was great to work on that project and to be able to make a difference in people's lives. During this difficult time. So thank you, Kevin, for the nomination and thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, Alicia. And I have a question. I have to acknowledge that the recipients are all women. Doctors Duran and Davis, was that a factor? I mean, was an award specifically for women or? Are the recipients just deserving women?
No, the award wasn't specific to women. I think they just demonstrated they did an excellent job. As mentioned before, it was a very difficult time as well. So to pull all of this off and in in the period that they did. And during the challenges that they're facing really was what really. Allowed us to make it very easy to decide that this was a very well deserved award and we wish to really congratulate them and thank them for their excellent work.
Absolutely. Counsel, I turn it over to you. Does anyone have any questions or remarks? With that said, I want to thank Paula, Katie, Sonia and Alicia for your service and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our second delegation today is with respect to Loon Call subdivision. I believe Randy, you'll be making some introductions.
Yeah, so the we have the developers with us that's later on the report. There's the Loon Call subdivision report that Scott will be presenting later on today. And so today we have with us. Suresh Singh, the CEO for Loon Call Development Group as well as his planning consultant Bob List. From representing Loon Call. And I think they just want to introduce themselves to council and. And may maybe speak to the development that's like I mentioned, it's going to be later on in the report later on the agenda. So welcome, Suresh and Bob.
Thank you. I'm Suresh Singh. I'm the founder of LC Development Group Loon Call. And I wanted to say hi because most of you have never met us and. We plan on working in Gray County for for a very long time. First, I I'd like to say congratulations to all the people who won the awards that were just on the previous delegation. That's pretty special and it's pretty special that. That there's been so much recognition towards towards women. And I'm also happy to see that. That there is strong diversity in 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 council as well, which is not something I see. A lot and and I'm I'm really excited about that. So I'll move on. We we are attainable ownership developers in across Canada and over the last. We we started our company in nineteen ninety six, but the focus on this type of of housing started in about twelve or thirteen years ago. In Jasper National Park, of all places, we were fortunate enough to. Participate in a private public partnership with the town of Jasper, local nonprofit group and. The federal government. So we built sixty four townhomes there. Then in Bracebridge and Gravenhurst, we've done hundreds and hundreds of home attainable ownership homes as well as employee housing. And for the last ten years, this is our first time stepping out of the District of Muskogee and we're pretty excited to be in Meaford and. Soon to be great, great islands in Markdale, just outside off beside the golf course. I wanted to talk about some of the challenges we face. I think everyone knows where house prices and construction costs and servicing costs and. Development charges have gone over the last several years. And then certainly over the last six to eight months, there's been some. Cost increases that are making our job and what we're committed to much harder. In the past, we've been able to focus our our price points on being seventy five to two hundred thousand dollars lower. Than whatever else someone could buy a home for, a comparable home for within the local market that we're working in. And that worked quite well because those prices were obviously. Attainable because, you know, up to five years ago, our townhome prices averaged in Gravenhurst and Bracebridge. Under two hundred thousand dollars. That simply can't be the case. Last year they averaged about two ninety. The problem with with where costs are going, we're simply not going to be be able to meet those. We run into a lot of comments from from various. Councils and and staff in in communities where we're new in about. You know, people are going to buy from us and just flip them. And that hasn't been the case in the past. We have focused so strongly on the people who live and work in the broader communities that we we were going to develop in. We but but we know that that is going to change with the way the housing market is. And what we are committed to doing is we check addresses now, we ask buyers where their employment is. We're trying to create as many triggers as possible to protect what we're doing from the from the very broad market. And the risk of of people coming in and buying them and flipping them. That is is something that we're we're highly committed to. You know, we want. We want when the people who live and work in in the communities to be able to create wealth for themselves. So. Looking at our projects and saying they're perpetually affordable, that is not the goal in any way, shape or form. The goal for us is to have people. Who live and work in the communities, buy our home. Create as much wealth as they can so that at some point. In their lives, they can retire and enjoy. Their home or enjoy life and life in general. So so for us, we want to make sure that that wealth stays with that individual as opposed to someone from. The GTA buying a home and. A year later selling it for a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars more than what. What we priced our homes at. And that's just not where we want to be. We definitely want to look for support in in how we can and ideas and how we can make that a reality. We know what we've been able to do in Muskogee. And if anyone were to have any suggestions for us offline, we'd love to hear them on how we can. Get in contact with as many people as possible who live and work in the community. So that when we launch our first projects, that they are the first ones that are that are permitted to buy. Because like every developer, regardless of attainability, we start with our very lowest prices on the day we open. I I I know I've spent some time with with council in Meaford and and they certainly understand who we are, the commitments we we make. And and they have vetted us through speaking to council in in Gravenhurst and Bracebridge and the District of Muskogee. As well as staff have spoken to their colleagues or or counterparts in in those areas as well. Because we want to, we want, we always want to make sure that. There is corroboration in understanding who we are and what we're committed to do in in our in the communities we're doing them in. And because we we get a lot of disbelief when we first come into different communities and that disbelief. Can can be very challenging. I wanted to mention this today amongst the 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 county council. Because I haven't met most of you. And I think it is really important that everybody. Believe in us because that's part of being successful in what we're doing is that council believes in us, staff believe in us. Because then the people who live and work in these communities are going to believe in us and and will be able to. Deliver what we're supposed to and and committed to doing. That's really all I wanted to to cover off is just give you an introduction to us. I guess the other part I can I can say is that we are, we are going to launch as soon as our draft approval, if 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 we are approved. As soon as that appeal period is over and if we're we're fortunate enough to get approval and 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 not not be appealed in any way. We're going to launch right away. And our prices are going to start at two ninety nine nine. And that will be eleven hundred square foot home, three bedrooms, one and a half baths, full basement and a single car garage. So something that a young family can afford. And and certainly very livable. And those sizes of townhomes will go all the way up to fifteen hundred square feet. And we'll also be having some semi detached homes in our first phase. So the target for us and the goal for us is to figure out how we access. The local market that needs what we're doing. The most. So thank you for. Hearing me out. And if anyone were to have questions for me, I'd love to to answer them. Otherwise, I can sign off and maybe Bob can speak a little bit as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Singh. And Mr. List, is there anything that you? Had to add?
Thank you, Warden. Just want to do build upon what Suresh said. And add a little bit. To his presence in the community. He is now a property owner in the town of Meaford and resident there. And for those of you who. Aren't as old as I am, there are names that I see on county council that I'm quite familiar with. The last names Milne, Gamble, Body and Mackey. I think I may have known some of these, the predecessors of those names in a previous life that I had. Working for the county of Gray, actually. And in the city of Own Sound as a planner a long, long, long time ago. Doing development in Meaford and. In Markdale, hopefully as well. It's like returning home for me. Having said that, I simply wanted to thank Scott Taylor and the county staff. As well as the town staff, Rob Armstrong, for assisting us. From day one, when we came into Meaford, we were welcomed with open arms. Which isn't unusual, but what was unusual was the enthusiasm with which we were welcomed. Mayor and deputy mayor as well, we met very early in the process. And they encouraged us very strongly to. And they encouraged us very strongly to proceed with our plans. And that was worthy of thanks. I also wanted to add, just in a technical perspective, that although the staff report references the public meetings that were held with respect to the official plan amendment, zoning amendment and draft plan of subdivision, I wanted to make council aware that we also engaged before any of those public meetings in what we call private information session, which was perhaps better attended than some of the public meetings that we had. In order to provide the community an additional opportunity to see what we were proposing and to comment upon it. And again, we produced as part of the background to this plan of subdivision, wide variety of background reports, which your staff are familiar with and which I'm sure highlighted, will be highlighted to you. And we believe that what's being proposed constitutes good planning under the rules of the province of Ontario, but more importantly, as Mr. Singh indicated, we believe that it's an opportunity to provide private sector-driven attainable housing. And we're always thrilled to be able to deliver that kind of product in the municipalities in which we work. Will be available for questions later as well if there are any. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. List and Mr. Singh. I see that we have some questions and I'm going to get to those questions with Madam Clerk and seeking your guidance here. Does it make sense for us to maybe quickly deal with item five and six consent agenda and keep our delegates on hand after Scott's presentation of seven A? So that they could be available for any questions that might come up as a result of that?
Of course, Mr. Warden, our delegates are more than welcome to stay on the call until after Scott Taylor presents his report.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So why don't we maybe deal with any questions that you have right now, but I would invite Mr. List and Mr. Why am I, Suresh? I'm sorry, I'm forgetting your last name. To stick around for questions when we deal with seven A in the agenda. Okay, so looking at the list, councillor Desai, you're first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation and also thank you for for bringing affordable housing to the community. As a younger person, who bought a house like two and a half years ago, it's just, it's been interesting to see the meteoric rise in housing prices in the area. And it's also been a little disheartening, to be frank, because it brings the realization with it that that there are others around my age who might not be able to afford their first house just because they were literally getting into the real estate game. So a lot of gratitude from me and I'm sure I speak for many younger people in the area for bringing affordable housing to the area. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, councillor Desai. Next is councillor Columbus.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden and good morning, Bob and Suresh. Nice to see you again and thank you for presenting today. I just want to reiterate how excited we are about this project coming into our community. Knowing Suresh that you're going to be a resident as well as just an added bonus. But this is just the whole idea of your commitment to community and to making an opportunity for young families to for homeownership and as you have indicated, to an opportunity to create wealth for themselves. It's in this day and age, particularly with the meteoric rise in home prices is an extraordinary challenge for you. And I also want to acknowledge the work that you've done with our staff, with Rob Armstrong to address the concerns particularly with regard to high density in the area, which of course creates the opportunity for attainability. And you did it with grace and reached a compromise that is going to work for all of us. So thank you for what you're doing. We look forward to moving this project along and welcome you to Meaford. And I know that the folks in Great Highlands will be equally as pleased once they get to know you. Thanks so much.
Thank you, councillor Columbus. And two of you now have used that term that I'm learning today, meteoric, meteoric, meteoric rise. Next, councillor Keveney.
Thanks very much, Mr. Warden, and I can thank you councillor Columbus for your comments as well. And certainly I echo them and I just wanted to express my appreciation to Mr. Singh, Mr. List and Mr. Knowles for being with us and particularly for being so available and accessible to council and to staff. You have created a real presence in the community already and that's greatly appreciated. And just to touch on as well, the fact that this area has the lowest unemployment rate in Ontario and and one of the major issues connected with that was that people couldn't afford to live here. And now you're going to be offering homes that that people will be able to afford. And I think our new nursing home coming in and the staff that will be required there and our new school and the other new businesses that are coming into the area. So it's it's perfect timing for you, Suresh, to be doing what you're doing. Again, I thank you for being here with us today and for what you bring. All the best to you all.
Thank you, councillor Keveney. Next is councillor Milne.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And in regards to Mr. List's comment about recognizing some names that have maybe long teeth, I'm not sure whether we met her or not, but in any case, that's fine. I'm not often regarded as long in the tooth. With my, anyway, my question is to Mr. Singh in regards to his comments about, you know, he's going to offer homes on the market at three hundred thousand, eleven hundred square feet. That's two hundred and seventy-three dollars a square foot for a finished home. Can you tell me what your secret sauce is? I mean, the price of lumber alone has gone up three hundred percent in the last few months. Where, how tight are you squeezing that two by four? I just wanted to know your remarks on that one.
Well, there are several inputs that we have to work hard to be able to achieve. Speed is really, really important. And when you see how quickly we get shovels in the ground and how quickly we build, that part you will understand. The other part, really and truly, we don't make as much money as other developers do by a real long shot. Our margins range between eight and ten percent. Whereas you'll see a typical developers at twenty to thirty percent going forward now. Now, at three hundred thousand dollars or two ninety-nine eleven hundred square foot house, you are correct. But you also have to remember that there are going to be a lot of other people that will be buying a bigger home. And yes, it'll still have a three in front of it. But our average price will not be two ninety-nine. Our average price for our townhomes will likely be three fifty, three sixty in that area, which are still attainable numbers. But for those who are most in need and are challenged the most with respect to incomes, that three hundred or two ninety-nine number will be available to them. The and quite frankly, that's really the, those are the two key inputs there, other than us working really hard with our tendering and speed. Those are the critical measures. I could tell you a story about something that happened in Muskoguk early on when we were there. The very first townhomes we sold, same size of that eleven hundred square foot house, we sold for one fifty-nine nine in twenty thirteen in Bracebridge. And we had local electricians come and say, hey, we want your work. And we say, okay, absolutely, we'd love you to price it. And when that happened, the best price we got in Muskoguk was exactly double of the trades that we use, that these trades came from the GTA. And their comment to us was, how could you possibly be at that number? And my answer to them was, well, how many houses can you rough in, of these townhomes can you rough in in a day? And they said, well, we can rough in one of those townhomes in three days. Whereas our trade, our electrician was roughing in two townhomes in one day. So clearly, they have, it's a far more efficient process, same number of people. So if you've got the same number of people doing a lot more work, you're saving a lot of money on that income side. This circles, you know, I don't want to say that that local trades cannot compete because they absolutely can. And the local trades that we find compete on and are engaged with as much as sixty percent of our of our cost. And that would be a lot of the servicing, landscaping, excavation, below-grade plumbing works, foundations, concrete supply, lumber supply. So there's a large amount that goes directly to the local community that where we drive business. But on those other areas, that forty percent, that's they're definitely coming from the GTA and their trades that have worked for us for the last twenty-five years. But that's the mix. I mean, we, it's really easy to, for there to be disbelief, but we're doing it now in Bracebridge, we're doing it now in Gravenhurst, average prices there are lower than three hundred. Townhomes in Gravenhurst and Bracebridge right now are two ninety and our single family and those average size is thirteen hundred square feet. And then our single-family homes there that we're constructing right now and we're closing five to ten homes a month there. That average price is three seventy-eight and those are seventeen hundred and fifty square feet on average. They're four bedrooms, two and a half baths, full basement and a double car garage. So yeah, we're doing it and it can be done.
I certainly commend you for what you're doing. I'll be honest with you and tell you I'm still a little skeptical, but however, you're doing it. So carry on. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Milne. I don't see any other hands, Madam Clerk. So with that said, perhaps it's time for us to move on to item five and determination of the items requiring separate discussion. Councillor, is there anything that you need to pull from the consent agenda? Councillor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The letter from the municipality of Great Highlands.
What's that number now?
Item C.
C, thank you much. Seven C. I don't see any other hands. So if that's the case, we'll move to item seven. It is the consent, sorry, six. It is moved by councillor Carlton, seconded by councillor Robinson. Is there anyone opposed to approval of that? And seeing none, it is carried. Thank you. So we are now dealing with item seven A. And it is moved by councillor Keveney and seconded by councillor Woodbury. And I believe Scott, you now have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Warden Hicks and members of council. I'm going to share my screen here. So just while I'm doing so, I'll say happy birthday to each and every one of you and any of those watching today. So can council see my screen here now? Okay, great. Thank you so much. So we've had an introduction to the Loom Call Development Group and thank you very much for, to our deputation for doing so. And thank you for the kind words about both municipal and county staff in that regard. So I'll take you right into it here. So these are the subject lands. They're located on the west end of Meaford. You can see them highlighted in blue there. They are on the north end of highway six, highway twenty-six, sorry. You'll see the Meaford Haven site, which is a large vacant lot right now, highlighted just to the south of those lands. I reference that because there will be a new intersection into the Loom Call lands and that intersection will align with this new intersection that's on the draft approved Meaford Haven lands as well. These lands are in the settlement area of Meaford. Directly to the west of these lands is outside of the settlement area, but these lands are in the settlement area. One other thing I draw your attention to is the location of Algonquin Drive here to the east of the lands, just because some of the neighbors' comments related to that and some of the connectivity comments also related to the fact that there's currently no ability to connect the road network to the east to Algonquin Drive or to the north to Centerville Road. So the lands are approximately fourteen hectares in size, just under. There was an original plan of subdivisions submitted for this application, which I'll show you in just a second. And then after all, the talk with agencies and the municipality and the neighbors, there were significant revisions made to the plan of subdivision. So what I've shown you on this slide is just the breakdown of what was originally proposed versus what's now proposed. And you'll see originally there was thirty-one single detached dwellings proposed, whereas now there's fifty. Originally, there was two hundred and six townhouses proposed, whereas now there's a hundred and nineteen. And there's now thirty-two semi-detached dwellings proposed, whereas originally there was some flexible block lands that were going to result in the creation of twelve additional units. Originally, we didn't have formal pedestrian walkways beyond the sidewalks or parks, but those now are in the plan and I'll show you that in just a second. And of course, there's stormwater management facilities as well. I should mention that through this development, there will also be highway requirements required here in terms of an eastbound and westbound left turn lane. And those are being coordinated between this developer and the Meaford Haven developer to the south. A zoning amendment was recently passed by Meaford Council and the county also recently passed an official plan amendment to the Meaford Plan, which dealt with a small portion of highway commercial lands that were on the subject site. The lands will have a direct new intersection access off of highway twenty-six as well as a further emergency access connecting to the highway as well. And there will be municipal services provided to this plan of subdivision. So what you have before you is the original plan of subdivision. And the one thing I draw your attention to is again, the lots backing on to the development to the east known as Algonquin Drive. And although these were proposed for single detached dwellings at the time, there were a greater number of single detached dwellings proposed there. I'd also draw your attention to these lands immediately abutting the highway, which would be part of people's rear yards, which they couldn't develop in based on a setback to the provincial highway in that regard. What you have now is the revised plan. What you'll notice is there's fewer single detached dwellings backing onto Algonquin Drive. And this came about as part of the dedicated consultation that this development group did with the neighbors. You will see that the lands now backing onto the highway that were formerly part of people's rear yards are going to be part of three blocks that will be deeded to the municipality. There'll be fencing along the rear yards of these semi-detached dwellings on the highway. And these blocks will be attractively landscaped so as to create an attractive entryway as you come into the former town of Meaford there. You'll also see there's a parkland block roughly right in middle development. And this will be developed as an active playground for kids and families living in the area. There's pedestrian walkways connecting up here to the north. And up here in the north, adjacent to the stormwater management block, there'll also be more passive parkland space where people can go and walk their dogs or do things of that nature. There is also landscaping that's going to be preserved along the periphery of the development, both to the east and the west to try to ensure compatibility with both the residential neighbors here as well as the agricultural and commercial neighbors on the west end of the development. So we did get significant public feedback on this and that was due in large part to the developer reaching out as well as we heard. They hosted a public information session before we ever had a public meeting on this one. We did have a public meeting at Meaford Hall on this one. And then there was further public comments that came out after that. And the developer was good to set up individual consultation sessions and discussions with neighbors and the municipality and the county in that regard to try to work through some of those comments and concerns that we heard. And in general, in terms of some of the comments we heard, certainly we heard lots of questions about the types of units being proposed and whether or not this was too dense for the municipality of Meaford or for the County of Gray in that regard. We heard concerns about that entryway into Meaford. And if you're driving along the highway there, what are you going to see? Are you just going to see the backs of houses or what we see in that regard? We heard concerns about traffic safety, both vehicular and pedestrian. I should note that although it's off-site of this development, there are also sidewalks being planned to connect this development to the downtown of Meaford in that regard. um, this development, uh, to, to, uh, the downtown of, of Meaford in that regard through, uh, Fort Ave and, and Grandview. Uh, we heard concerns about the location. There was people asking questions about whether or not, uh, uh, development of this density should be locally located perhaps closer to the downtown or maybe even closer to the, the, uh, new school that's being built in Meaford. We heard questions about impact on the environment, uh, questions about tree removal on site, uh, infrastructure questions, uh, drainage, stormwater flooding concerns, uh, and, and, uh, questions about, uh, about, uh, the, the timing and impacts of construction as well as removal of the existing farmhouse on site. Um, and so I would note here that the lands are designated for development in both the county and Meaford official plans. In the county plan, we, we require a minimum, uh, density of twenty units per hectare. Uh, this proposed development, I should say twenty units per net hectare. This proposed development would now be at approximately twenty-three units. Uh, but that is actually a slight reduction from the original plan of subdivision, uh, which was more in the range of about twenty-seven units per net hectare. Uh, the subdivision, as we've heard, provides a range of housing types, uh, uh, from singles, semis and towns. Uh, and they will be, as we've heard from the developer here today, uh, compared to many other units on the market currently. With respect to, uh, um, working through some of the, the excellent public comments we got, and I should say, uh, this developer was great to work with, um, but so too were the, the public in this regard. Um, although we heard concerns from the public, it was very much how can we work together to resolve these concerns and not simply, well, we don't want development here. So as much as we give kudos to the developer, we also give kudos to the public for, for everybody rolling up their sleeves and, and trying to work together for a solution in this regard. And, and Meaford staff were fantastic there as well. Um, so with respect to addressing those concerns, um, as we saw, there are, uh, both pedestrian walkways and parkland added to this development. And I think it is a real, uh, benefit to this development, both in terms of the activity, outdoor space. And as we've seen through the pandemic, that, that, uh, space is certainly at a premium now. Um, but also I think it will make a more, uh, attractive and, and usable, uh, development in that regard. As we heard, there will be fencing along, along the rear yards of those semi-detached units backing onto the highway and it will be attractively landscaped. Uh, the developer has also committed to, to making the second stories of, of, uh, those homes varied in nature, um, such that, uh, such that again, it creates that attractive entryway. Uh, they have reduced the overall density and added, uh, some wider single detached dwellings, uh, to, to be more in line with, uh, some of those existing developments, uh, backing onto Algonquin Drive there. Um, and they've also, there's also a condition of, of draft plan approval recommended, uh, which would allow for, for, uh, photographing and documenting, uh, the existing farmhouse on site prior to demolition. Um, because there was some comments raised from members of the public about, uh, about, uh, what, uh, uh, an important, uh, piece of local history it was, even though it's not designated as a, as a significant heritage building in that regard. Uh, as I noted, there will be, um, turn lanes added to the highway here and we're also looking at sidewalk, sidewalk connections offsite, um, such that the people, uh, living in this future development will have access to some of the other wonderful things that Meaford has to offer in this regard. So subject to the conditions of draft plan approval that were attached to the report, county staff are satisfied that the, uh, the proposed subdivision has regard for matters of provincial interest under the Planning Act. It's consistent with provincial, uh, policy statement, conforms to the county plan and also conforms to the, the Meaford official plan, uh, subject to that, uh, Meaford official plan amendment that was recently passed. And I should note the lands are not within the Niagara Skartman Plan area, so therefore conformity is not needed to that plan. Um, with that, we'd again like to acknowledge the, the, um, the changes that were made by this development group to respond to some of the comments that were heard. Um, it did make for, for a, a better overall development. We're recommending that this, uh, report be received. Um, and that the, the draft plan of subdivision be, be approved, um, subject to the conditions set, set out in the attachment to the report. Certainly be happy to take any questions if there are any from members of, uh, committee of the whole here today.
Thank you very much for that very good report, Scott. Uh, counsel, are there any questions? Uh, Counselor Patterson, you are first.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Um, to Scott, thank you for that, uh, report. Uh, I only see one entrance. Am I missing another one? Is, I'm thinking of safety for the subdivision.
Through, through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, you are correct, Counselor Patterson. There is only one permanent entrance to this, um, development. The lands are located on Highway twenty-six and, and in discussing with MTO, um, from the early days, uh, they were clear that they only wanted to see one, uh, new entrance here. Um, what we do have is we also have an emergency entrance that would come off the highway. So it won't be a, a full-time, um, open public entrance, but it will be an emergency entrance. Uh, and we have actually also left, um, a future entrance to the west, uh, should those lands ever be added to the settlement area. So you're quite right in pointing that out. Normally on developments of this size, uh, we would see additional entrances. Uh, but given the conditions on Algon, Algonquin Drive to the east, uh, the inability to connect to, to Centerville in the north, um, this is, this is sort of the best that could be arranged, uh, which still had the support of the Ministry of Transportation in that regard.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is Counselor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And, uh, just a comment really for Scott, and I so appreciate that you, uh, that you mentioned and, and showed appreciation for the, uh, great work that was done between now the developer and the residents of Meaford. That is a process that I and, uh, continue because you're absolutely right. The residents, uh, really just wanted to, uh, to have input into making this very best development that it could be for Meaford. And I believe that is, uh, the result of that collaboration and, uh, just wanted to express Scott, how much I appreciate you and staff being involved in that process and making sure that it, uh, that it worked in the way that it has because it's, it's pretty special. And you write often when we hear, um, news of a new development, uh, you know, there is the nimbias and people just don't want it, but everybody has worked together on this project and, uh, the result that we have in front of us, I think is just a really, uh, excellent one. That's going to be good for Meaford and it's going to be goals of the developer. And it's also going to be not just acceptable, but it's, but it's going to be, uh, a project that, uh, that enhances the entrance to Meaford and that, uh, provides the housing that we need and that, uh, residents who've worked on this can be proud of. So thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you, Counselor Keveney. I do not see any other hands.
Yes, Counselor Millen.
Millen, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, Scott, I don't see, uh, and maybe it's not a concern. Uh, but I don't see any allowances for, uh, snow storage. There's, there's very limited room. There's very limited front yards in a many of these properties. Where are you going with the snow? Because I do know it does snow from time to time in Meaford.
Through, through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, thank you for that comment and question, uh, Counselor Millen. Um, that certainly is one of the concerns that we, um, we have to consider, uh, especially when we're looking at density. So when we're looking at smaller front yards for, for the towns and the semis in that regard. Um, this is certainly out of my expertise level, but we've worked closely with, with, uh, municipal staff, not just their planning staff and CAO, but also, uh, their, their operations staff. Um, the, the development, the engineering was also peer reviewed in that regard. So at this stage, we haven't had anything, uh, flagged from, um, from the municipality in that regard in terms of the sto, snow storage. Um, but that was something that we raised very early on with Serration and Bob and his team. So, um, certainly if, if, um, if, um, Warden Hicks, you would permit, uh, I would defer to Serration if he has any comments here or Bob, um, and, and leave it at that.
Mr. Singh. Yeah, hi. Uh, yes, that's definitely, uh, something that's always on our mind. And the municipality that we've worked in, uh, uh, the most and has equal to or more snow than Meaford is Bracebridge. And these lots, uh, uh, actually work very well. Yes, the front yards get piled up with snow. But it is, uh, but this is as small as we can get and be effective in, uh, in, in storing the, the necessary snow. Uh, we have to remember that the, the roadway, the roadways are typically the paved areas about eight, just over eight meters. And, uh, and we have our typical large, uh, 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 medians and, uh, sorry, uh, boulevards. So they, they have been adequate. And in fact, in Jasper National Park where snow again is comparable or more, uh, the, the homes there, the townhomes there were eighteen feet wide as opposed to the, on average here, we're about seven meters when you count, account for the, uh, end unit. So yes, we have taken it into consideration and we have been effective in, um, in, in solving that problem with this type of density.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mill. And now I do not see any other hands. And if that's the case, it's time to call the question. Uh, so is there anyone opposed to the motion as presented? I do not see anyone opposing, so I will say that that is carried. So thank you very much, Scott. And thank you very much, Mr. Singh and Mr. List for taking the time to come and make your delegation, uh, today. All right, counsel onward and upward. We have been meeting now for an hour and twenty minutes approximately. Yes, I I see you, Counselor Mackey. I am going to suggest that we take a break. Let's come back at, uh, eleven oh five sharp. So if you would turn off your, uh, video and microphones, we'll be back here at eleven oh five. So if you would turn off your video and microphones, we'll be back here at eleven oh five.
Okay, we are back. Katrina, can you confirm that we are good to go?
Madam Clerk, can you confirm that we have quorum? Yes, we do.
Yes, we're all set to get going. Thanks, Warden.
Thank you, Katrina. So, we're back and we are moving to item seven B, dealing with our reserve and reserve fund policy. Joanna's on deck. It is moved by Counselor Hutchison and seconded by Counselor Patterson. Joanna, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mitt Warden Hicks, and good morning to County Council. Can you hear me okay? Okay, I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay. I just have a PowerPoint presentation here. Can you see that? You can see, okay, great. Okay, so this is the County of Gray's first ever reserve and reserve fund policy. So, why does the County of Gray need a reserve and reserve fund policy? It governs the management and administration of the County of Gray's reserves and reserve funds. It establishes the principles regarding the creation, funding, use, management, and closing of reserves and reserve funds. It sets out target balances for reserves which help guide optimal decision-making, and it provides clear guidance and direction on two staff on their obligations and responsibilities concerning the administration of reserves and reserve funds. So, the purpose of reserves and reserve funds is to ensure that there's adequate working capital available for cash flow and contingency purposes and to, and as a source of funding for the county's long-term capital plan while maintaining reasonable tax rates and user fees. So, there are thirteen sections in the policy. I'm just gonna touch really briefly on each section. So, section one defines reserves as money set aside by approval of council, either by resolution or budget adoption and not restricted by legislation, and reserve funds are money set aside for a specific purpose as required by provincial legislation of municipal bylaw or agreement. And there are two types of reserve funds, obligatory and discretionary. A good example of an obligatory reserve fund is the Development Charges Reserve Fund, which is regulated by the Development Charges Act. Section two of the policy talks about legislated requirements. All reserves and reserve funds must be managed in accordance with the Municipal Act. There are some sections that I've referred to in the policy. Section three is about establishment and modification. So, how do we establish a reserve fund? Most often as inclusion in the annual budget, which is approved by council or through resolution of council or statutory legislation or bylaw that establishes a funding requirement. Every reserve has a financial plan which identifies the purpose of the reserve, the target funding levels, contribution sources, and projected disbursements. And this plan will be reviewed annually to ensure the purpose and need for the reserve remains unchanged from its original intent. Section four talks about investments. So, reserves and reserve funds may be invested generally for a term that will not exceed the expected date of need, and the investment must be in accordance with the cash and the county's cash and investment policy. And section five talks about contributions to and draws from reserves and reserve funds, which can generally be made in accordance with applicable resolution bylaw or as approved by council as part of the annual budget process. And there are some exceptions that are noted in the policy. Section six talks about lending or temporary borrowing for internal financing purposes. So, that is, that is permitted as part of the policy, but it must be adequately supported and authorized by council. And loaning of obligatory reserve funds is prohibited. The loaning can only occur from discretionary reserve funds or from reserves. Section eight, section seven talks about terminating or closing reserves. They can be wound down or closed when program commitments have been completed and no further commitments are expected. And any reserves or reserve funds that are identified for termination must be reported to council for review and approval. Section eight talks about responsibilities. So, the treasurer has responsibilities to determine the need for reserves and reserve funds and budgets, set targets, perform transfers to and from as authorized by council, and develop and update this policy as necessary and present changes to council. Directors have the responsibility to provide the treasurer or delegate the most current capital asset information to determine the adequacy of the capital lifecycle reserves. And members of council must ensure that administrative and controllership policies, practices, and procedures are in place to maintain the financial integrity of the municipality. Section nine talks about reporting. So, the treasurer does have responsibilities to oversee the preparation of the annual financial statements, which does include a changes in fund balances for all reserves and reserve funds. The treasurer also prepares with the directors an annual operating and capital budget that includes contributions to and draws from reserves and reserve funds. The treasurer must prepare a development charges reserve fund report and present that to council for approval. And the treasurer will also prepare an annual reserve and reserve fund report that includes a current year reserve continuity schedule with projected contributions and planned draws for a ten-year period. That's in line with our ten-year capital. Section ten talks about external loans. So, external loans may be made to any persons or groups for any purpose considered to be in the best interests of the municipality. Loans must be provided from non-restricted reserves, and council retains full discretion over whether a loan shall be granted and the terms of any such loan. And county staff must consider the nature of the persons or groups deriving benefit, the intended term of the loan, interest rate of return, and any security to protect the county's interests. Section eleven talks about delegation of authorities. So, once council approves reserves by resolution and reserve fund bylaws, the treasurer will have overall responsibility for this policy. And section twelve talks about the review of this policy. So, the policy will be presented to council for review at least one, once in the term of each elected council or earlier if deemed necessary. And section thirteen, so current, talks about specific reserves and reserve funds. So, currently we have, our current schedule contains approximately a hundred and forty lines of reserves and reserve funds. Staff are recommending that these be grouped into seven categories, which will assist with presentation and management of these reserves, but that does not preclude staff from maintaining additional breakdowns for tracking and accounting purposes. And so, there are five reserve categories and two reserve fund categories. So, the, the reserve categories include a corporate stabilization reserve, which is used to manage cash flow, offset extraordinary and unforeseen requirements, one-time expenses, revenue shortfalls, basically to avoid any significant fluctuations on the operating budget and the general tax levy. Government-funded reserves are used to segregate and track grant revenues received from the federal provincial governments and that are used for specific purposes as per the requirements of each program. Healthcare reserves are used to fund healthcare initiatives. Departmental-specific reserves are used to fund departmental projects and initiatives and capital reserves for renewal, replacement, and acquisition of our assets. And two reserve fund categories are, there's the consolidated development charges reserve fund, which provides funding for growth-related projects as detailed in the background study and our bylaw, and federal gas tax reserve fund, which provides funding for investments as per the agreement for the transfer of the federal gas tax revenues. And so, attached to the policy is a schedule showing the reserve or reserve funds that we have currently, their names, the actual year-end balances as of December thirty-first, 2020, target balances, sources of funding, uses of funding, and the purpose to preserve. And I think that is it. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer, and Kevin is also on standby.
Thank you very much, Joanna. I wonder if we get, there we go. I can see everyone now. Counselor, are there any questions? I do not see any. If that's the case, perhaps we're ready to simply call the question. So, on the motion to receive, approve, adopt, and authorize, is there anyone opposed? I'm seeing none. That is carried. Thank you very much, Joanna.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back. Katrina, can you confirm that we are good to go? Madam Clerk, can you confirm that we have quorum? Yes, we do.
Yes, we're all set to get going. Thanks, Warden.
Thank you, Katrina. So, we're back and we are moving to item seven B, dealing with our reserve and reserve fund policy. Joanna's on deck. It is moved by Counselor Hutchison and seconded by Counselor Patterson. Joanna, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mitt Warden Hicks, and good morning to County Council. Can you hear me okay? Okay, I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay. I just have a PowerPoint presentation here. Can you see that? You can see, okay, great. Okay, so this is the County of Gray's first ever reserve and reserve fund policy. So, why does the County of Gray need a reserve and reserve fund policy? It governs the management and administration of the County of Gray's reserves and reserve funds. It establishes the principles regarding the creation, funding, use, management, and closing of reserves and reserve funds. It sets out target balances for reserves, which help guide optimal decision-making, and it provides clear guidance and direction on two staff on their obligations and responsibilities concerning the administration of reserves and reserve funds. So, the purpose of reserves and reserve funds is to ensure that there's adequate working capital available for cash flow and contingency purposes and to, and as a source of funding for the county's long-term capital plan while maintaining reasonable tax rates and user fees. So, there are thirteen sections in the policy. I'm just gonna touch really briefly on each section. So, section one defines reserves as money set aside by approval of council, either by resolution or budget adoption and not restricted by legislation, and reserve funds are money set aside for a specific purpose as required by provincial legislation of municipal bylaw or agreement. And there are two types of reserve funds, obligatory and discretionary. A good example of an obligatory reserve fund is the Development Charges Reserve Fund, which is regulated by the Development Charges Act. Section two of the policy talks about legislated requirements. All reserves and reserve funds must be managed in accordance with the Municipal Act. There are some sections that I've referred to in the policy. Section three is about establishment and modifications. So, how do we establish a reserve fund? Most often as inclusion in the annual budget, which is approved by council or through resolution of council or statutory legislation or bylaw that establishes a funding requirement. Every reserve has a financial plan, which identifies the purpose of the reserve, the target funding levels, contribution sources, and projected disbursements. And this plan will be reviewed annually to ensure the purpose and need for the reserve remains unchanged from its original intent. Section four talks about investments. So, reserves and reserve funds may be invested generally for a term that will not exceed the expected date of need, and the investment must be in accordance with the cash and the county's cash and investment policy. And section five talks about contributions to and draws from reserves and reserve funds, which can generally be made in accordance with applicable resolution bylaw or as approved by council as part of the annual budget process. And there are some exceptions that are noted in the policy. Section six talks about lending or temporary borrowing for internal financing purposes. So, that is, that is permitted as part of the policy, but it must be adequately supported and authorized by council. And loaning of obligatory reserve funds is prohibited. The loaning can only occur from discretionary reserve funds or from reserves. Section eight, section seven talks about terminating or closing reserves. They can be wound down or closed when program commitments have been completed and no further commitments are expected. And any reserves or reserve funds that are identified for termination must be reported to council for review and approval. Section eight talks about responsibilities. So, the treasurer has responsibilities to determine the need for reserves and reserve funds and budgets, set targets, perform transfers to and from as authorized by council, and develop and update this policy as necessary and present changes to council. Directors have the responsibility to provide the treasurer or delegate the most current capital asset information to determine the adequacy of the capital lifecycle reserves. And members of, of council must ensure that administrative and controllership policies, practices, and procedures are in place to maintain the financial integrity of the municipality. Section nine talks about reporting. So, the treasurer does have responsibilities to oversee the preparation of the annual financial statements, which does include a changes in fund balances for all reserves and reserve funds. The treasurer also prepares with the directors an annual operating and capital budget that includes contributions to and draws from reserves and reserve funds. The treasurer must prepare a development charges reserve fund report and present that to council for approval. And the treasurer will also prepare an annual reserve and reserve fund report that includes a current year reserve continuity schedule with projected contributions and planned draws for a ten-year period. That's in line with our ten-year capital. Section ten talks about external loans. So, external loans may be made to any persons or groups for any purpose considered to be in the best interests of the municipality. Loans must be provided from non-restricted reserves, and council retains full discretion over whether a loan shall be granted and the terms of any such loan. And county staff must consider the nature of the persons or groups deriving benefit, the intended term of the loan, interest rate of return, and any security to protect the county's interests. Section eleven talks about delegation of authorities. So, once council approves reserves by resolution and reserve fund bylaws, the treasurer will have overall responsibility for this policy. And section twelve talks about the review of this policy. So, the policy will be presented to council for review at least one, once in the term of each elected council or earlier if deemed necessary. And section thirteen, so current, talks about specific reserves and reserve funds. So, currently we have, our current schedule contains approximately a hundred and forty lines of reserves and reserve funds. Staff are recommending that these be grouped into seven categories, which will assist with presentation and management of these reserves, but that does not preclude staff from maintaining additional breakdowns for tracking and accounting purposes. And so, there are five reserve categories and two reserve fund categories. So, the, the reserve categories include a corporate stabilization reserve, which is used to manage cash flow, offset extraordinary and unforeseen requirements, one-time expenses, revenue shortfalls, basically to avoid any significant fluctuations on the operating budget and the general tax levy. Government-funded reserves are used to segregate and track grant revenues received from the federal provincial governments and that are used for specific purposes as per the requirements of each program. Healthcare reserves are used to fund healthcare initiatives. Departmental-specific reserves are used to fund departmental projects and initiatives and capital reserves for renewal, replacement, and acquisition of our assets. And two reserve fund categories are, there's the consolidated development charges reserve fund, which provides funding for growth-related projects as detailed in the background study and our bylaw, and federal gas tax reserve fund, which provides funding for investments as per the agreement for the transfer of the federal gas tax revenues. And so, attached to the policy is a schedule showing the reserve or reserve funds that we have currently, their names, the actual year-end balances as of December thirty-first, 2020, target balances, sources of funding, uses of funding, and the purpose to preserve. And I think that is it. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer, and Kevin is also on standby.
Thank you very much, Joanna. I wonder if we get, there we go. I can see everyone now. Counselor, are there any questions? I do not see any. If that's the case, perhaps we're ready to simply call the question. So, on the motion to receive, approve, adopt, and authorize, is there anyone opposed? I'm seeing none. That is carried. Thank you very much, Joanna.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving next to item, where are we? Item seven C, dealing with our quarterly purchasing report. It is moved by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor Hutchison. And Mike, I believe you now have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden Hicks, and good morning to council and staff. Yeah, this is the quarterly purchasing report. It summarizes all the projects that's gone through the purchasing office with values between seventy-five and five hundred thousand from, from Q1 of this year. Typically, this report is seen on the consent agenda. However, today, there is one project that staff at Gray Roots would like to provide an update on, and therefore, it's been taken off of that consent agenda. I should mention, any budget shortfalls noted in the chart on the report are addressed in the financial section. And that's about it. If anyone has any questions on the projects, I'm happy to field those now. Otherwise, I turn this over to Jill at Gray Roots.
Thank you. Jill?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, everybody. Can you see me all right?
I see you perfectly.
Hi. Great. So, thank you, Mike, and good morning, Warden and, and the council. I'll be sharing a description of the planned replica general store at Gray Roots Museum and Archives and some background on the procurement process. So, first, I'll share my screen. Let me see. All right, are you guys seeing?
That's good, Jill.
The map of Morrison? Okay, great. So, I'll, this is the location in Morrison Heritage Village that we're speaking of. And this is a drawing of the intended final product. The replica general store will be a twenty-three foot by thirty-eight foot story-and-a-half stud-framed clapboard-sided and gabled-roofed structure with a single-story twenty-three-by-fourteen-foot wood-framed board and battened addition in the back of the building and a wooden boardwalk along the front. This building will function for demonstration purposes as a historic general store, special event demonstrations, and educational programming activities. We are exploring the feasibility of also selling local products and select food items from the general store. The new build is aligned with phase four of Gray Roots' long-term master site plan and included on the Niagara Skartman Commission's approved list of eight buildings to be built in Morrison Heritage Village according to each building's ability to enrich the Gray Roots experience for visitors and residents, increase the number of artifacts on display, attract new audiences, and encourage visitors to stay longer and maximize repeat attendance. All recommendations identified in Gray Roots' twenty thirteen business plan update and repeated in the twenty sixteen strategic plan. The project is intended to begin this May with careful consideration of provincial restrictions and public health recommendations at that time. The tender for the general store with a budget of three hundred and fourteen thousand closed with one bid received for four hundred and seventy-four thousand from Dom Construction Limited. Gray Roots facility manager Ted Noble had a follow-up meeting with Dom Construction to, and after some negotiations and adjustment, adjustments, Dom revised their bid to four hundred and fifty thousand. Given the COVID trend of increasing construction costs, Gray Roots sought permission to move forward and award this contract before costs increase again. The budget shortfall will be covered by allocating the Fleming family's bequest of a hundred and four thousand seven hundred and thirteen and twenty-five cents received in two thousand and thirteen. Gray Roots staff connected with the family at that time, and it was agreed that construction of general, of the, a general store would be an appropriate use of those funds. The remaining thirty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-six and seventy-five cents will be taken from Gray Roots Heritage Building Reserve with permissions received in accordance with the purchasing and capital reserves for renewal, replacement, and acquisition of our assets. And uh, two reserve fund categories are, there's the consolidated development charges reserve fund, which provides funding for growth-related projects as detailed in the background study and our Bala. And federal gas tax reserve fund, which provides funding for investments um, as per the agreement for the transfer of the federal gas tax revenues. And so attached to the policy is a schedule um showing the reserve or reserve funds that we have currently, their names, the actual year-end balances as of December 31st, 2020, target balances, sources of funding, uses of funding, and the purpose to preserve. And I think that is it, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer, and Kevin is also on standby.
Thank you very much, Joanna. I wonder if we get, there we go. We can see everyone now. Counselor, are there any questions? I do not see any. If that's the case, perhaps we're ready to simply call the question. Um, so on the motion to receive, approve, adopt, and authorize, is there anyone opposed? And seeing none, that is carried. Thank you very much, Joanna.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving next to item uh, where are we? Item 7C, dealing with our quarterly purchasing uh, report. Uh, it is moved by Councilor Patterson and seconded by Councilor Hutchison. And Mike, I believe you now have the floor.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Warden Hicks, and good morning to council and staff. Uh, yeah, this is the quarterly purchasing report. It summarizes all the projects that's gone through the purchasing office with values between seventy-five and five hundred thousand from, from Q1 of this year. Um, typically, this report is seen on the consent agenda. However, today, there is one project that staff at Gray Roots would like to provide an update on, and therefore it's been taken off of that consent agenda. I should mention, uh, any budget shortfalls noted in the chart on the report are addressed in the financial section. And uh, that's about it. If anyone has any questions on the projects, I'm happy to field those now, otherwise uh, I turn this over to Jill at Gray Roots.
Thank you. Jill? Hello.
Hi.
Hi, everybody. Can you see me all right?
I see you perfectly.
Hi. Great, so thank you, Mike, and uh, good morning, Warden and Candy Council. Um, I'll be sharing a description of the planned replica general store at Gray Roots Museum and Archives and some background on the procurement process. So first, I'll uh, share my screen. Let me see. All right, are you guys seeing?
That's good, Jill.
The map of Morrison? Okay, great. So um, I'll, this is the location in Morrison Heritage Village uh, that we're speaking of. And uh, this is a drawing of the um, intended final product. Um, the replica general store will be a twenty-three foot by thirty-eight foot story and a half stud-framed clapboard-sided and gabled-roofed structure with a single-story twenty-three by fourteen-foot wood-framed board and battened addition um, in the back of the building and a wooden boardwalk along the front. This building will function for demonstration purposes as a historic general store, special event demonstrations, and educational programming activities. We are exploring the feasibility of also selling local products and select food items from the general store. The new build is aligned with Phase Four of Gray Roots' long-term master site plan and included on the Niagara Skartman Commission's approved list of eight buildings uh, to be built in Morrison Heritage Vill- Village according to each building's ability to enrich the Gray Roots experience for visitors and residents, um, increase the number of artifacts on display, um, attract new audiences, and encourage visitors to stay longer and maximize repeat attendance. All recommendations identified in Gray Roots 2013 Business Plan Update and repeated in the 2016 Strategic Plan. The project is intended to begin this May with careful consideration of provincial uh, restrictions and public health recommendations at that time. The tender for the general store um, with a budget of three hundred and fourteen thousand, closed with one bid received for four hundred and seventy-four thousand from Dom Construction Limited. Gray Roots Facility Manager Ted Noble had a follow-up meeting with Dom Construction um, to, and after some negotiations and adjustment, adjustments, Dom revised their bid to four hundred and fifty thousand. Given the COVID trend of increasing construction costs, Gray Roots sought permission to move forward and award this contract before costs increase again. The budget shortfall will be covered by allocating um, the Fl- Fleming Family's Bequest of a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and thirteen um, and twenty-five cents received in 2013. Gray Roots staff connected with the family um, at that time, and it was agreed that construction of general, of the, a general store would be an appropriate use of those funds. The remaining uh, thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-six and seventy-five cents will be taken from Gray Roots Heritage Building Reserve with permissions received in accordance with the purchasing policy. Gray Roots volunteers and staff have long anticipated this new build, and with the development of the regional agriculture learning and demonstration site next door, there is a great opportunity to showcase the abundance of products from Gray County Farms and celebrate local business as the economic drivers and treasured community hubs that they are. And I'll turn it over for questions.
Thank you very much, Jill and Mike. Uh, if I could see the full screen again. Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Mill. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and uh, yeah, this is a long overdue project. I'm happy to see it. Go ahead. Um, Jill, I'm just wondering, the, 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 you mentioned a piece on the back, clapboard, a single-story piece on the back. Will, will that be a spot where there'd be an opportunity to uh, um, sell or provide uh, locally sourced uh, hooch, I mean, cider?
I'm not sure if it's cider, um, but um, the intention for that back um, attachment is that it's uh, kind of a secondary building, which would have been typical of the time period of the nineteen twenties. So it kind of expands the opportunity for interpretation.
Sure, or a woodshed, where you might want to take a, you know.
Never know.
Yeah, you never know. That's right. So anyway, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mill. Uh, anyone else? I do not see any other hands. Any questions for either uh, Mike or Jill? I don't know if we want to talk at all about the um, the tough books. But we're good, looks like. Okay, in that case then, I uh, thank you, Mike and Jill, for your presentation, and I will call the question on the motion to receive. Is there anyone opposed? And seeing none, that item is indeed carried. Thank you very much. So onward we go now to item 7D. Kim is on deck. Uh, we are dealing with the appointment of our treasurer and Finance Department restructuring. It is moved by Counselor Robinson and seconded by Counselor Carlton. Kim, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and good morning, council. Uh, this report, CAOR, CWO621, requests your support for the restructuring of the Finance Department, including the recruitment of three new positions to financial analysts as well as a manager of revenue. Um, as noted in the report, the impact in-year unbudgeted um, salary, wages, um, furniture, and equipment for those positions um, due to some um, fortunate uh, staging or staggering of recruitments, et cetera. Um, we're able to achieve this for the amount of forty thousand dollars, six hundred. Um, and that can be funded uh, from any in-year, um, year-end, I'm sorry, any year-end departmental surplus. And should that not be available to us, then we can turn to the one-time funding reserve for that forty thousand. Um, furthermore, the report requests your support for the appointment of Mary Lou Spicer, our long-serving deputy treasurer, as the new incoming county treasurer. Um, and we would bring a bylaw back to our next meeting to confirm that appointment. And then, um, finally, uh, because our next meeting is three weeks away, we were hoping that you would see your way clear to allowing us to proceed with recruitment of the, at least the um, manager and one of the analyst positions um, preceding the May thirteenth meeting. Um, I think that the work will begin to pile up quickly in Kevin's absence, and so the sooner that we can get moving forward to get some new staff on board, that will help to alleviate a looming issue. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that, that anyone on council might have about this.
Thank you very much, Kim, counsel, uh, Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and uh, Kim, um, just a good report. Uh, I'm just wondering though, how long has Kevin been doing the work of three or five or six people? Uh, I know he does a lot of work and he does a lot of good work, but really, he's been doing the work of three people? Can you just talk to that a little bit, please?
Absolutely. I, I think that um, it's something that came out um, very clearly in the operational review. I, I think it's something that um, anyone who's worked here or spent time at the county has recognized the really inordinate amount of overtime that the Finance Department has put in for many, many years. I think the other thing that we all recognize too is that the, the county's business, just like the business in all of your member municipalities, hasn't stood still over the last number of years. Every year, it seems like um, you know, we're taking advantage of grant, grant opportunities or changes in regulation and legislation that have impacted the scope and scale of the work that we're responsible for. And the one thing about finance is it's involved in every single one of those new programs or program changes. All of the reporting and everything, all has to run through finance. They really are integral and critical to the success of every single thing that the county does. And we, it's our reputation, it's our responsibility to ensure that everything to do with our financial matters is perfect. Right? There's no margin for error there. And so in order to be able to achieve some pretty high standards, it's really important that um, our staffing here keeps pace with the demands that we're putting on it.
Thank you uh, very much for that, and it was a, a great answer, and I, and I appreciate it. I, I just, I want to make sure though that the new people, is there a question in the recruitment process to make sure they cheer for the right darn team?
I'll add that.
Seriously, we're, we're moving this Red Wings guy out, so let's get some more Leaf fans in there, okay, and let's make it perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mill. Uh, moving next to Counselor Soever.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, so um, we, we're getting a new treasurer, so that's great, and, and obviously, you know, we do need staffing up. How much uh, input did she have into these staffing decisions? She's going to be running the department and you know, certainly um, you know, um, I guess these people will all be reporting to her, so um, you know, I, I just was just wondering, how much input did she have um? I've been dropped into places where uh, you know, the structure's already set, and you know, it doesn't give a lot of flexibility. The, the other question I have is uh, what is, I mean, this year's costs are minimal, but what is the cost on an ongoing basis, like an annual cost for these additions?
Okay, thank you for those questions. Um, certainly, the uh, work that went into developing the uh, revised organizational chart that is attached to this report, and I do apologize, there was a, a, a change late in the process that showed the org chart is uh, as an attachment rather than having the, the links that are in the report, so they don't work, and, and I am sorry for that. Um, but certainly, in developing the new organizational chart, we took into account the work that had was done earlier by the consultants as part of the operational review. But then we sat down with both Kevin and Mary Lou and Joanna um, and Jennifer Moreau uh, to talk through what this could look like and how best to organize it, as well as the staff themselves. I think it's, you know, a really a critical success factor that everyone in this department has a shared um, vision um, and understands the goals and objectives as we adjust um, the way that this department is functioning to better serve yourselves and all of their client departments. So the senior management team's been involved in discussions about this as well, so I think there is a really good level of awareness, and, and I think that's really, really important for it to be successful. As far as um, the year-over-year uh, increase in costs to having these additional positions, um, as noted in the financial implications section of the report, that's estimated at three hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars a year.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Good, Counselor Soever?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Desai, uh, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, just a quick statement to uh, to Counselor Mill. Um, I've been told that in, in finance, there's a lot of coffee drinking. I, I worry if we uh, if we got Leafs fans in, they might not be able to lift the cup, just like their team. Uh, to get to my question, Mr. Warden, um, we're noticing that there's a change in workplace culture. There's more of an emphasis on work-life balance, there, there's more of an emphasis on mental health as well. Um, and, and we're seeing that uh, the current generation of employees prioritize uh, differently. Um, and that's not to say one, one generation was right and the other wrong, uh, but that's just the, the truth of it. Uh, my question to the CIO is, how much has this change, this shift in workplace culture informed uh, that the organizational review for the Finance Department? And going forward, will we possibly be looking at a more fulsome organizational review for, for the full county? Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Kim.
Uh, great questions. Thank you for those. Um, I'll start with the, the second one. Uh, we, last year, we completed operational reviews for the human resources and finance function. And I think to, to really um, get those recommendations fully implemented and then have the benefit of um, really observing exactly uh, the impact that those changes will have is likely something that's going to take us a couple of years. And uh, so we'll be watching closely over that, and I think at that point then might be in a better position to take a step back and say, are, do we need to take another look at the organization as a whole? So I, I'm not thinking that we would take a broader operational review um, project forward at this time, but it may be um, once these two foundational departments are up and operating, as we know, they, they, they can and should be to prepare us for the future, we could take another look at the organization as a whole. I know that you've heard from um, from Barb Fady around the changes that are um, intended and coming um, for social services, so that's another piece that we really, I think, need to see land um, before we would um, do a lot of work to try and uh, and reorganize things more broadly. As far as the work-life balance goes and um, how this uh, reorganization is taking those uh, those uh, emerging trends into account, I think it's, it was an important factor. The county's business in, in almost every department has become increasingly complex. And the, the knowledge, the skills, the education that are the requirements of, of people to really fulfill these duties, especially when we're trying to pay attention to um, finding that sweet spot between enough staff, the right staff, to get the work done is a challenge. So in order for us to um, get the most out of the um, skills and abilities of the staff that we are, that we currently employ, as well as the new ones that we're trying to recruit, we need to make sure that these are really great jobs for great people. And as well, we want to be able to um, maintain, uh, keep the people that we have, keep them producing at their optimal level and happy and healthy and all of those things. So, you know, having that good work-life balance is a really important factor in our ability to be able to do that. So I'm hoping that with um, your support of these new positions, we'll be able to uh, to deliver that for our staff.
Okay, Kim, Counselor Desai, anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much, Kim, for the detailed answer there.
Okay, I do not see any other hands, and if that is the case, it's perhaps time to call the question on the motion to receive, fund, appoint Mary Lou Spicer as our treasurer and commence recruitment. Is there anyone opposed? I do not see anyone, so that too is carried. Thank you very much. We'll turn now to item 6C. Um, I'm dealing with Gray Highlands broadband resolution. Um, I'm gathering it be moved by Counselor Desai. I need someone to second it in order to have a discussion about it. Seconded by Counselor Potter. Okay, Counselor Desai, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I think um, the, the letter from the municipality of Gray Highlands, uh, it's, it's calling for the county to, to have a uh, a central uh, function in, in providing reliable uh, equitable and, and, and cost-effective internet to, to constituents of Gray County. Um, and so the, the reason I've brought this out is, is worked for council to, to look into that and, and perhaps um, uh, get direction or give direction to staff um, to move in that direction, because we, increasingly, especially in this post-pandemic world or in this middle of the pandemic world, I guess, we're seeing that internet and access to internet is becoming a basic, uh, basic need. Um, kids can't get education if they don't have reliable internet. Um, from, from a, from an entertainment perspective, there's a lot of entertainment you can miss out on if you don't have reliable internet. So that, it, it, it does affect your daily life. Um, so uh, it's important that as a uh, as a level of government, that we are able to uh, provide equitable access uh, to it. And that's the reason I pulled it out, so that we can, as county council, um, have a response on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. Uh, next is Counselor Potter.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Warden, and uh, just wanted to support uh, this motion. Um, if we are going to have anything happen on this uh, file, it's going to have to be us that do it. Uh, and we're going to have to make the upper levels of government aware of the need here. Uh, they are not, uh, they, they are going to be inundated with uh, proposals, and if we aren't at the table, uh, we are going to be swept aside. To date, uh, we, we do have a letter from the Chair of SWIFT saying that uh, they are basically out of money for the time being, and uh, they are, have so far only been able to provide access uh, out of, they've only covered about eight percent of the total financial requirement while providing access to about twenty-two percent of the underserved premises. Uh, most of Gray County will not benefit from SWIFT at this time, and, and it's difficult to know when we will. So that's not a, to be a slight against SWIFT, it's just that SWIFT has its limits. If we are going to uh, uh, get anything done, we're going to have to do it on our own. Uh, and uh, work with SWIFT when we can. Uh, other than that, we are going to have to step to the plate ourselves uh, as a county and work together in partnership.
Thank you, Counselor Potter. Uh, next is Counselor Soever.
Yes, um, and, and I'd like to echo uh, Deputy Mayor Potter's comments, but um, more to the point is that, you know, SWIFT is working, but they're delivering service to areas where there are large numbers of houses close together. Um, and so these are shoreline communities, suburban communities, so that you know, and there have been a couple of SWIFT projects in Gray County that have been approved that uh, truly serve the rural areas. Um, but only five percent of the projects that SWIFT has served areas where houses are more than a hundred meters apart. So most of Gray County houses are more than a hundred meters apart on average. So um, you know, that means that we need to come up with a plan, and, and really, I think that's why it's so important that we, we do work together, because the way SWIFT is looking for proponents, and they're going to pick the best, most profitable projects, and they're going to pick the plums out of the plum pudding, and then the rest of the pudding is much less exciting. So um, what we need to do as a county, I think, is, is work together as communities and actually identify where these underserviced areas are and come up with a plan how best to serve them. So um, Deputy Mayor Potter is uh, in charge of our Rabbit Task Force, and what we're doing in the Blue Mountains, and we're happy to work with the rest of the county on this as well, should the county want. But we are actually, we're doing an internet speed challenge that'll be launched uh, in, in early May to encourage everybody to test their internet speed so we can get more data points, and then we are looking to partner with the university as well in, in, in those talks are in early days, but um, to actually have But to actually have, you know, fund a bit of research so that we can come up with a plan for our community to say, how do we most efficiently service the whole community? Because we know that there will be proponents that will come and pick the, you know, the population centers out of our community. But once those are gone, the good profit centers, then there won't be anybody to come and service the the rest. So what we want to do is come up with a plan. So when proponents come, we have something to offer them in the terms in terms of data and in terms of, okay, we'll help you with putting, say, conduit down our roads or whatever we have to do. But if you want us to support you on a grant application, we have the data and the mapping to help you with that. If you want us to do that, then you've also, instead of just serving this little village, we want you to service, you know, the small area around it. Now, that's obviously a negotiation. How successful will be remains to be seen. But I think if we took that approach and said to people, okay, we'll we'll help you with access to county roads, things like that, we have information, you know, and a lot of these fun funding applications, you know, support from the municipality or opposition, as the case may be, would have a big effect on the ability to get the funding. So I think you know, we had our open house. Out of that, we actually had two service providers that hadn't previously considered the Blue Mountains actually come to us with a proposed project and ask for support. So it's early days yet, but I think these kind of collaborative efforts where we actually come up with a plan and develop a knowledge base and 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 create a a point of contact is we can then steer these projects so that we can actually make sure that our underserved rural areas are not forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Silver, and Counselor McQueen, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I know you and I had a conversation about this maybe a week and a half ago. So hopefully, I may sound a little bit repetitive toward with what you hear, but hopefully the to share it to the rest of county council. So this sort of came from a discussion at Gray Highlands. We have a internet task force ourselves as well that we put in since last fall and and our deputy mayor and counselor Nielsen is on that task force along with our counselor Alw. And they're looking at, you know, what is happening in in Gray Highlands, and they're in the process of doing a survey to try to gather information back. In tandem to that, the Gray Highlands Chamber of Commerce is also applying for a CERA grant to look at the ability to hire a university student to to dive more into what is out there with regards to what's being provided as far as internet and where are the gaps. And so they made an application for twenty-five thousand dollars of their abouts. And I'm not sure if everybody is aware of the CERA grant, but it was it was, I think, the deadline was a few weeks back that it had to get in. And certainly, we as municipalities support the Chamber of Commerce doing that because it had to be a non, it couldn't be a municipal government to make that application. Couple of things is the is it's worded in the resolution, equal broadband for equal costs. And so depending on where you are located in Gray County and how you get your internet, if you're on a cable network, so for example, if you're in Markdale or Eugenia Eastlake, and I guess, you know, as we know, that the standard that they're that they're sort of rolling up right now is fifty down, ten up. So if you're on that system, you would cost you about eighty dollars. But if you're don't have that access to Eastlake and you're on a wireless network, one of the providers can provide you eighty down, sorry, fifty down, ten up for two hundred dollars. So there's a difference in equity in the or equality in the sense of the cost of that internet is is, you know, a great difference between eighty and two hundred. As we know right now, our our school-aged children right now are at home on doing their schooling from from the internet that is out there and and to the cost or to what level that, you know, your parents are 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 the affordability of what package they are accessing. So there is a discrepancy in in the cost of of internet here and, you know, in Gray County. Also, the idea one time is we did have a dedicated, you know, sort of the early days of where SWIFT got started. And again, just to iterate others that certainly SWIFT has done a great, a great job in the sense of bringing it collectively. And as we all know, that, you know, the early days of SWIFT started here in Gray County with Jeff Hogan, and it and it sort of expanded and the idea of getting better broadband, it moved across half the provinces. We know the the Western Wardens have been, you know, working very hard to bring that forward. And I I know that they're now working on the two point O with regards to fiber. And so all, you know, we certainly look forward to success there as well. But is what I'm understanding now is 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 for the rural providers or the wireless providers, it's getting tougher and tougher to get access to the fiber. And the cost is continuing to to go up because you need a connection point, you need so many customers to get on that connection point. And then it's a business model, and hence to give you fifty-ten, that's why it costs so much and to to, you know, to pass on those costs that it's costing them. And I understand, you know, you know, a few of the big providers, you know, you know, you could you could look at it, it could be possibly Roger or Bell or other ones that have those fiber networks. It's very costly for those smaller companies to to get the access point from them. But going back to a dedicated person in Gray County, certainly early days is I'm trying to think it was before ExploringNet, there was a rollout, that money that Gray County put into that to look at how, you know, to get, you know, the early days of getting broadband across Gray County. And then I think they had financial problems and then ExploringNet took over from from that company. And I think at one time, I remember Jeff Hogan bringing us a map of Gray County where we were somewhere around seventy or seventy-five percent was the target in order they had to complete in order to fulfill the funding requirements that they had received. So from that, that was a very good exercise, and those are the early days of of rolling out broadband, probably some around the table, around the virtual table here, maybe remember that. But as you know, we've we've expanded to the SWIFT model and and it's, you know, you know, Western Ontario is a big area. And so this is this idea is going back to maybe as we were in the early days of broadband, we're dialing it back to Gray County and sort of looking at, can we work collaboratively with the county and the lower tier and and others, other providers to look at ways of of trying to bridge that gap between the equality with equal broadband. And and there's our our areas of of low coverage and 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 also the equal cost or or trying to bridge that gap in the sense. And I know that we're all quite aware of, was it a few weeks back, three weeks ago, that the provincial government announced an additional two point two billion dollars toward the expansion of broadband? I'm sort of thinking more now that 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 could be more trying to to capture those areas that maybe don't have proper internet or proper coverage. Because one of the things that we do have here in Gray County is we're not flat. And we do have hills and valleys that sometimes have an issue with regards to coverage and and all that 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 comes into play with line of sight and 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 that. So no fault of anybody other than it's it is what it is. So again, Mr. Warden, and I'm, you know, there could be a possibility here maybe of deferring a decision on this. Let's see, it just only got passed at our last, well, the April seventh council meeting, and it was to be circulated to all our lower-tier municipalities. And I might maybe wondering that maybe this should be deferred as far as any decision made on this and and maybe push it forward, maybe to a month just to see if we get some other comments back from other lower-tier municipalities. I don't know if I'm sure all the other ones maybe have received it, maybe haven't had it come to their council meeting yet as well. And again, it would we would be good to sort of get some other feedback on what other municipalities are thinking. And again, this is just, you know, an opportunity to see if we can all work together to achieve something maybe a little better in the sense of the of the of those that are in those situations where it's higher cost or lack of service. And I'll I'll leave it at that, Mr. Warden, and we'll go from there. You're unmute.
Yeah, I had a loud vehicle that I turned off. My apologies. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Deputy Warden McQueen. And Counselor Millen, I do see your hand, and I'll acknowledge you in just a second. But I just want to, from a procedural point of view, acknowledge that there really is no decision to be made here today. We have a letter that's before us to be received and and simply that. So we're having a discussion about the letter and I suppose the resolution that's contained in that letter. And so just a reminder, there's there's no motion here about anything for county to make a decision about. Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and wise words. So if there's no decision to be made, I'll ask no question. Thank you.
So.
Mr. Warden?
Yes?
If I may, can I just make a couple of remarks?
Please go right ahead.
Thank you. And I appreciate the discussion that's that's taken place so far here this morning. Certainly, from a staff perspective, I think that we likely need to delve into exactly what it is that you're looking to achieve in a little bit more detail in order to provide any sort of advice from a staff perspective. I do note the the comments about SWIFT, and I I do want to remind council that SWIFT was funded by the the province and the and the federal government. And they were bound by the funding rules that were set out by those other levels of government. And the projects that SWIFT was able to support needed to be judged by the number of of premises that they were able to connect. And the standard to which the service that was to be delivered was judged on was, again, set by the province and the federal government. So I think SWIFT did the best job that they could with the rules that that they were provided. This is an area where technology is changing really quickly. We have the Starlink satellite coming online, which has the potential to be a real game changer. There has been a lot of discussion for many years about whether or not broadband needed to be considered a a utility and a public service that everyone should have access to. That decision, I think, lies with the CRTC and the federal government, and there has not been a decision taken to to hold us to that account. I do think a little bit of the of the conversation that's happened here does make me just a little bit nervous about bonusing rules and things of of that nature. Certainly, the the ISPs that provide internet services to people are private companies, and we would need to be very careful about how it was that we were directing taxpayers' money to support individuals and the potential of of giving an advantage to one that another didn't enjoy. We know that that's something that we always have to be really careful about. So I'll leave it there from there for today, but I think there are a lot of questions. Some of this makes me wonder if if a lobbyist wouldn't be something that you might be looking more towards. But I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. I see Councilors Potter and McQueen. I don't see any other hands, so perhaps if no one else, we'll deal with Counselor Potter and then McQueen, and then we'll wrap things up.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I I just wanted to follow up by saying that this is exactly the the point is that SWIFT has done what they can for now. If we want to go beyond that, then we have to do it ourselves as Gray County. And in our municipality, we are moving forward with our own plans. We'd be, we'd love to have other municipalities join us. Gray Highlands has has met with us a couple of times. And we would like to make this a county-wide endeavor. But one way or the other, we will be be pursuing this for our residents because frankly, our residents are not second-class citizens. They deserve the same advantages as everybody else, and they deserve them at an affordable price. And so if SWIFT can't provide them, and I'm not saying SWIFT SWIFT isn't isn't trying, it's just that SWIFT has its limitations. And and in fact, the chair said that in his letter to us recently. But we we feel that we have to look ourselves at what we can do and and put ourselves before the upper levels of government to get whatever help we can and to work with our local businesses who are involved in this and and in several cases have a lot of experience. And we are doing nothing that is any different from what SWIFT has done in that we are seeking partnerships and endorsing the efforts of our local firms. And one of them is local to the Blue Mountains, the others are Gray County firms that are working with the upper levels of government on funding for these. So we're we're simply partnering with them and and supporting them. So I'm not sure that there's any anything untoward going on in that vein. We're simply doing what SWIFT already does. So with that, I just wanted to follow up, though, that that this is not an attack on on SWIFT or this or that SWIFT has left us behind, but SWIFT has done what it can. And what we've been told by the Chair of SWIFT is that there is nothing available at this time. There was no certainty as to when anything will be available. And so if we want anything ours for our county and for our municipalities, we have to do it ourselves.
Thank you, Counselor Potter and Counselor, or sorry, Deputy Warden McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Certainly not looking at making bonusing anybody or creating an opportunity that somebody is going to benefit from from another. But I think we need to seek out, there's a few things, I think, is working together, working. So is we need some more clarity on the recent announcement by the provincial government on on funding of the two point two billion dollars. And we do know there is areas within the province, areas within Gray County that doesn't have very good internet. I mean, just recently, even the eastern side of Ontario got funding to increase their cellular coverage. And as we know, there are a lot of people that do even use cellular for internet that has very certain areas have don't don't have very good coverage. So, you know, the part of this is is looking at those areas that that don't have internet, period. And I think even back when Mr. Hogan was with us, you know, I think it showed seventy or seventy-five percent of a certain level of internet, certainly not to the level of fifty-ten that is sort of the maybe the benchmark that was the set the set in two thousand and sixteen. And the other part is, is the advocate for lower costs in the senses. The, you know, the the main players that that those wireless companies that are out there in our in our Gray County are finding it harder and harder to get that price point because of the monopoly of who owns the fiber. And I don't think it's anything in the sense of of, it's just that it just seems to be changing. And we know it's competitive and it's it's a very competitive market in in internet, like every other kind of business. But, you know, so I just wanted to raise those two points. We need clarity from the provincial government's funding. But the other thing is, is in a sense of, you know, our process, and this is where I was saying about today, Mr. Warden, with regards to this, it's right now, the motion's on the floor to receive this. But if there is further support, I guess, from a point of procedurally, how do we bring this back if we don't even receive it today? And that's the thing is, is that's where I wondered is if it was not just in the sense of receiving it, but in the sense of waiting and to see if there's further support around the county and and come back with this to to sort of see if there is a different direction other than than receiving it. And the other part is, is we've talked about this a few weeks ago with regards to the collaborative framework process. And basically, if we do get other supports from other municipalities, that framework that was set out, then That framework that was set out, then then we, you know, we're sort of asking the county to sort of take a look at it. And I guess in the sense of clarity maybe to the CEO is, you know, what, what is that direction in the sense of, of a further staff report to come back and. So I'm, I'm just sort of seeking a little bit of process on the part, Mr. Warden, in the sense that I hate to see this, uh. You know, just die here and, and not go any further. That's not the intent. It's, you know, and I think it's more important right now. Of, you know, school age kids out there that are having a struggle right now of getting internet. And, and we know that. As I think the warden or the Madam CEO has said is, you know, internet is becoming an, you know, a, a utility or, or a necessity. And so, um, you know, there's a lot that sort of fiber is, is the ultimate where we're heading and start to, or, um, Starlink is. Something else that's, that's rapidly coming fast and we're gonna see a lot of change in the next few years. But again, um. You know, from a local perspective, is it, you know, is it worth considering, uh, looking zeroing in and Gray County? Uh, as well as, as we do support Swift and, and, uh, I'm just looking at it more as in the sense of zeroing in Gray County. But procedurally. Uh, Mr. Warden, uh, I, I would hate to see this die just by receiving it today.
Okay, thank you, uh, Deputy Warden McQueen. On your question of procedure, and I will turn to our clerk in a second, but, uh. What's before us in my view, uh, is a letter which contains a resolution from, uh, Gray Highlands. And we are simply going to vote to receive it, I think, today. If, if it's to go any further, I would suggest that. A notice of motion would have to be, uh, brought and then subsequent to that, an actual motion. Uh, so. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you have anything more to add, uh, um, that's the way I see it.
Um, I absolutely agree with you, uh, Mr. Warden. The. Resolution from Gray Highlands is actually seeking, uh, support from the town of Blue Mountains. And, um, we haven't received anything from Blue Mountains or any of the other lower tiers. So we are just receiving this for information. And, um, you're absolutely right that certainly, um, further down the road, uh, a notice of motion could come forward. From someone on this particular topic.
Councillor Soever.
Um, I, I would just like to advise the council that, um, this is on the, uh, our council agenda for, uh. May the third. So, uh, we will be, uh, then, you know, either deciding to support or, or not this, uh. This letter. And I understand it's also been sent to the other, um. Local municipalities. So perhaps it's better to revisit at that time. Uh, but procedurally, just as a matter of interest, uh. Um, Madam Clerk, uh, one could have, of course, uh, brought an amendment to this, uh, resolution. Is that correct?
Of course, an amendment, um, depending on what it is, it would have to be germane to the original, um, resolution.
Yes, of course.
Okay. Um, you may be surprised that I'm not chiming in on this. Number one, I'm sitting in the warden's, uh, chair. And number two. There really isn't, uh, a proper, um, motion before us. So I, I, I won't comment on, on the, uh, on the. The Gray Highlands, uh, resolution, although I am your representative on Swift and I'm quite interested in, in all things, uh, broadband. Okay. So we've had very good discussion. I think it's time to call the question on the motion to receive for information. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Thank you very much. We're on to item number eight. Is there any other business? And seeing none, item number nine, are there any notices of motion? Councillor Soever.
I'd like to bring a notice of motion, um, that I will be bringing a notice of motion. On the timely posting of staff presentations and delegations in, in advance of meetings. Um, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anyone else with a notice of motion? Looking at both of my screens, I do not see, uh, any others. And, uh, so that brings us to item number. Excuse me, all of a sudden, item number ten, adjournment. It is moved by councillor Burley. And seconded by councillor Columbus, that we adjourn. Oh, I see hands. Um, councillor Soever.
Sorry, mine's just stopped from before.
Okay, and Kevin?
Warden, I know, uh, I mean, I didn't ask for this to be on the agenda, but I wanted to thank council, um. Uh, for the privilege to serve, uh, um, as an employee of the county of Gray. Uh, like to thank Kim Wingrove. To the senior management team, uh, been a great working, uh, very proud of the services that we've delivered. Uh, congratulate Mary Lou Spicer on, uh, uh, becoming the next treasurer. Well deserved. She's worked very hard. Um, like to thank all the employees and the finance department, specifically, they work very hard for you guys. And, uh, just thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, yeah, indeed. Deputy Warden McQueen.
So, uh, thanks for your service, Kevin, over the years. Does this mean now you're gonna get the Mustang out? Where'd you go?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we'll see you out, out and about.
Thank you, everyone. Good meeting. Uh, I think we are, oh, so anyone opposed? Oh, we have hands. Okay, sorry, uh, councillor Millen.
Yeah, if I could, uh, Mr. Warden, um. As, as a former warden, I, I have worked, uh, a lot of times with, uh, Mr. Wepler. Kevin has done a tremendous job for the county, as, as everyone knows. He's been a very hardworking and loyal employee. Uh, what I have found remarkable about Kevin is that he can take a very. Uh, difficult topic and I, I won't say tax rates, but, or ratios, but. That is one, one that is sometimes a bit of a mystery to a lot of people, but he can make even. Uh, someone like myself understand what exactly is going on with that kind of stuff and what isn't going on, which is very important. And he's very genuine in his efforts to make sure that everybody, everybody understands, uh, what, uh. Is going on and what is being proposed. Um. Kevin has always, I've always considered Kevin a good friend. Uh, sports teams notwithstanding. Uh, but he, and he, and he, he serves as a great, a, a great measure of, of humility and humor. Uh, and I like interacting with Kevin. He does a great job. Uh, I can't say too much and I'm not gonna say anymore other than to say thank you, Kevin, and I look forward to seeing you in the days ahead.
Great words. Thank you very much. Uh, councillor, I believe Mackie, I saw your hand. No, you were just itching or something?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And I just want to echo the same comments as, uh, councillor Millen. You know, in the, over the last six years, when I first got to meet Kevin, he's made the, the process very easy. And it is very complex for a lot of us laypeople that, uh, you know, aren't fully aware of the, the whole tax system and the whole budget. Uh, processes, but you know, through Kevin's reports, it became so much easier over the last six years to understand. And I. I certainly appreciate that. And I know the people of Gray County certainly appreciate that. So Kevin, all the best in your retirement and, uh. You know, you, it's certainly well deserved, but we're gonna miss you. Take care.
And councillor Potter.
Uh, thank you. I have been on council but a short time, but I do want to thank Kevin for. Uh, all of his work on behalf of the county. And I think the highest commendation is that, uh. Uh, as councillor Millen said, he can explain, uh, these, these difficult and complex subjects in a way that even Leafs fans can understand. So thank you.
Okay.
Ouch, that hurt.
Yeah, re- resist, resist. Okay.
Uncalled for.
I don't see any other hands, Madam Clerk. And if that's the case. Then I'm going to say, is there anyone opposed, uh, to the motion to adjourn? And seeing no opposition, I'm gonna say that we are adjourned. Good meeting and thank you folks. Enjoy the rest of your day. Cross your fingers for warmer temperatures.
Yeah.
Happy trails to you, Kevin.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Kevin.
Take care, Kevin.